I want to welcome everyone tonight. This is the March 15th meeting of the City Council. Glad you could join us. We've got a full house tonight, so thank you for being with us. To start out, we'd like to begin with a prayer, and I'm going to ask the Chief of the Gastonia Police, Chief Robert Hilton, to lead us in that prayer. And when he has finished, if you will stand and join me in citing the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Spout our heads in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for all those who are gathered here tonight, this opportunity to gather in your name. We thank you for all of these young people and all the blessings that they bring to our community. We ask that you guide us and direct us tonight in our decisions, and let our actions be to your glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Thank you very much. Sometimes I have a tendency to go very quickly. This is the first meeting I've led, so if I miss something or start going too fast, just raise a finger or yell my name or something, and we'll slow that down. But we'll move right into Item C on the agenda, which is adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda, as well as add the additional items that are proclamations that we're going to be doing today.
Okay, and that would be, we have a motion and a second, and the added items are Item D, three and four, and also Item 5A onto the regular agenda. Okay. So we have adoption of the agenda, and we'll move right into our awards and ceremonies and promos-- oh, I'm sorry, we didn't take a vote. I apologize. All those in favor of the agenda? It's unanimous. Imagine that. Honor. Tell you what, first one, we're already making mistakes. That's all right. We'll move on to Item D, which is awards ceremonies and promotions. And first, we have a proclamation for the Reverend Dr. Benjamin Hinton. It's the 25th pastor's anniversary at Tabernacle Baptist Church. Did Mr. Hinton make it tonight?
I don't think Pastor Hinton made it. He's probably a little delayed, but I'm sure he'll be here in a few minutes. We'll do him last, if that's okay. I'm going to take Arbor Day first.
Sure. We'll be glad to come back to Dr. Hinton, and we'll move right into the Arbor Day proclamation.
Pat, if you don't mind, come on up. Carly, is she along with her? This is Pat Johnson. She's, this is Pat Johnson. She's in charge of Keep Gastonia Beautiful. I love the acronym for Keep Gastonia Beautiful. It's the KGB. Just love that, you know? There's a proclamation for them. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that on the special day be set aside for planting of trees. This holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas in 2016, it is the 144th anniversary of the holiday Arbor Day, and is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas trees are renewable source and beautify our community, and whereas Keep Gastonia Beautiful will observe Arbor Day downtown along the dedication, along with the dedication of the Maples on Main in April, as Gastonia was named Tree City USA for our 15th year, and that day shall receive this award. If you haven't been downtown with all the trees down there on Maple, it's really, really pretty. Get a chance to see it. It's really nice. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Gastonia do hereby proclaim Keep Gastonia Beautiful celebration of Arbor Day, and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, to encourage all citizens to plant trees in Gastonia for future generations. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Gastonia to be affixed this 15th day of March in the year of our Lord 2016. Mayor John D. Bridgeman. And I just want to say, Pat, thank you for all your efforts and all that you do in Gastonia to help keep it beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to say a few things?
Yes, please. As most of you know, the Arbor Day proclamation is a requirement to be a tree city. And fortunately, we've received notification for this year, our 15th year. To put this in perspective, there are 552 municipalities in North Carolina. Only 80 hold this designation, so we should really be proud for this. The Tree City Award will present, be presented to you in late April. The date's yet to be determined. And we will dedicate also Maples on Main, which is a project endorsed by Mayor Pro Tim Pierceall. So the tree plantings have increased our tree canopy downtown, and will certainly add color to our downtown. So thank you again for this proclamation. Appreciate it. That's it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Carly, thank you.
And Jim, the good doctor is here.
Yes, I know. Reverend Dr. Hinton from Tabernacle Baptist Church, please come forward. Dr. Hinton, in my studies, the past week, I came across this phrase. It was a Raima, and I just want to give it to you. It's from Nehemiah, Chapter 13, verse 14. And it says, "Remember me for this, O my God, and do not blot out what I have so faithfully done for the house of my God and its services." Pastor Hinton has served faithfully for Tabernacle Baptist for 25 years. That's an amazing feat for any pastor. Usually run off within three or four years. This man, he's, let me read his proclamation. It is very impressive. Whereas Reverend Dr. Benjamin Hinton, Senior Pastor of Tabernacle Baptist Church Gastonia, was licensed to preach in 1982 and ordained in 1984, received his BA degree in Psychology and Sociology from Piedmont College in Demerist, Georgia, and a Master's of Divinity degree from Morehouse School of Religion and International Theological Center in Atlanta. Whereas, he also earned his Doctorate in Ministry degree at the same time. Whereas Reverend Dr. Hinton is celebrating his 25th year of ministerial service of the congregation of Tabernacle Baptist Church, and since Reverend Dr. Hinton became Senior Pastor in March of 1991, Tabernacle Baptist has experienced tremendous growth and transformation under his spiritual guidance and leadership, including the establishment of a weekly television broadcast, which my wife and I have definitely so long enjoyed, and that shares gospel, shares the gospel to thousands of North and South Carolinians, in addition to numerous ministries which serve the community as well. Whereas Reverend Dr. Hinton is also sought after speaker, preacher, evangelist, teacher, and facilitator, who taught, lectured, and preached across the nation, and has been a featured speaker at the General Missionary Baptist State Convention of North Carolina, the State Congress of Christian Education, and the North Carolina State Baptist Convention. He is also the author of not one, but three books, and serves on the faculty of the National Baptist Congress of Christian Education of National, of the National Baptist Convention, USA. And plus, he finds time to preach on top of that, weekly. Whereas, that's, that's a lot to do. Whereas Reverend Dr. Hinton extends his pastoral duties in service to Gastonia and Gaston County communities in a number of leadership roles, including membership of the Board of Directors of the Community Foundation of Gaston County. To me, that just screams, run for the money. The Board of Directors of Gaston County United Way, the Board of Directors of Gaston Together, and as Dean of the Gaston County Missionary Baptist Association Training Institute. He is the Secretary of the Ordination Council and former Vice Moderator. And the man still preaches. Whereas, in recognition and appreciation of his community service, he has received numerous awards, including the Gaston County Martin Luther King Unity Award. And whereas, he is married to Minister Tangella White Hinton, who is also partner in his ministry at Tabernacle Baptist Church. Together with, they are parents of two sons, one Benjamin Samuel II and Nathaniel Robert. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, John Bridgeman, Mayor of Gastonia, North Carolina, call on the citizens of this great city to join me this day, March 15, 2016, in congratulating Reverend Dr. Hinton on celebrating 25 years of pastor anniversary as Senior Pastor of Tabernacle Baptist Church, and thanking him for the many years of service to the community and as a pastor and community leader. Please join me.
Thank you, Councilman Gallagher. Mayor Bridgeman is absent in council. To all those who are gathered here today, I am honored to serve this great city and this great county, and just to be a part of North Carolina. Moved here 25 years ago, and I've seen a lot of changes over the years, but I'm blessed. I'm thankful for the support of my wonderful, wonderful members of the Tabernacle Baptist Church and all the greater Gaston community. God bless all of you. My prayers are continued with you as you all lead the city and as we lead the community in a spiritual and of a leadership capacities. God bless you. Glad to have, my wife was, she was on the way, but my son Nathaniel is with me, and some of our members from the church, I'm glad to have them here tonight. So God bless you. Thank you for this honor, and I'm honored, privileged to serve as a leader in this great city. God bless you. Thank you, my friend.
Thank you, Councilman Gallagher.
For our next presentation, excuse me, we have a proclamation, Welcome Home Vietnam for Veterans Day, and that will be done by Councilman Humphries.
I'm going to ask Mrs. Glenda Rogers, the Regent of the Major William Chronicle Chapter, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, to join me at the podium, please. A proclamation. Whereas the United States of America Vietnam War commemoration gives us the opportunity for all Americans to recognize, honor, and thank our Vietnam veterans and their families for their service and sacrifices during the Vietnam War from November 1, 1955 through May 15, 1975. And whereas more than 9,000 organizations across America have joined with the Department of Defense as commemorative partners to honor our nation's Vietnam veterans, including the Major William Chronicle Chapter and all 106 chapters of the North Carolina Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, National Society, Daughters of American Revolution. And whereas, this commemoration includes the 9 million Americans, approximately 7 million living today, who served in the United States Armed Forces during this period, and makes no distinction between those who served in country, in theater, or were stationed elsewhere during those 20 years. All answered the call of duty. And whereas, in recognition of March 29th being the last day that US troops were on the ground in Vietnam, Veterans Affairs Secretary Robert A. McDonald has designated March 29, 2016, as a day to honor those who have borne the battle and to extend gratitude and appreciation to them and their families. Now therefore, I, Todd Pierceall, Mayor Pro Tim, City of Gastonia, do hereby proclaim March 29, 2016, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day, and urge all of our citizens to express our gratitude and appreciation to our Vietnam veterans. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand this 15th day of March in the year of our Lord 2016. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all. On behalf of the Major William Chronicle Chapter, the Daughters of American Revolution, I thank the council for this proclamation to honor the many Vietnam War veterans, and I know they will appreciate it. And thank you so much, and may God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. It's good seeing you.
I can kiss him because he used to come over to my house when he was a little ball we played with my, my children. So, well, David's a great guy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next proclamation we have, I'll be walking down to the podium to present, and despite the fact that we have a lot of colorful artwork in the, in the audience tonight, I think the only thing more colorful is the neon pink and yellow I see in the back. So if I could ask that group to join me at the podium, please. You're fine. Occasionally, you just kind of stumble upon something, and I learned of this group actually on social media. And once I learned about what they did, I thought it was very important that we recognize their commitment and participation and generosity to our community. Behind me, you see the GLC 4x4 and Assistance Group. And whereas, GLC 4x4 and Assistance is a volunteer organization originally formed with the purpose of using their own 4x4 trucks and SUVs to help those who were stuck during the snowstorm this year, and whose purpose has grown beyond its original mission, and is looking to keep helping the community in a way within their means, and has assisted people who were truly in need, no matter what day or time, and consists of a group of people with many different skill sets that can help from automotive services, lawn and tree service, to residential repairs, and have come together and donated their own time and materials to help those in need, in the hope that others will follow their example and return to a time when neighbors helped neighbors. And the GLC 4x4 and Assistance has accomplished pulling out hundreds of cars and trucks that were stuck or slid off the roads during the last snowstorm, including law enforcement vehicles and a fire truck. They took people in the medical fields to and from work at the hospital and nursing homes. They carried food, kerosene, wood, and other heating supplies to those without transportation. They blocked roads to help first responders work accident scenes. They cleared driveways and secondary roads. They raised money and built outdoor steps and repaired a roof for a disabled veteran. And they cut and removed fallen trees. And the GLC 4x4 and Assistance is scheduled to help demolish a house in order for Habitat for Humanity to rebuild on the lot. Work with, they also work with area nursing homes and are looking for volunteer opportunities to help clean up areas of the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Todd Pierceall, Mayor Pro Tim of the City of Gastonia, do hereby proclaim March 29, 2016, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day, and urge all of our citizens to express our gratitude and appreciation to our Vietnam veterans. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my, my hand this 15th day of March in the year of our Lord 2016.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all. On behalf of the Major William Chronicle Chapter, the Daughters of American Revolution, I thank the council for this proclamation to honor the many Vietnam War veterans, and I know they will appreciate it. And thank you so much, and may God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. It's good seeing you.
I can kiss him because he used to come over to my house when he was a little ball we played with my, my children. So, well, David's a great guy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next proclamation we have, I'll be walking down to the podium to present, and despite the fact that we have a lot of colorful artwork in the, in the audience tonight, I think the only thing more colorful is the neon pink and yellow I see in the back. So if I could ask that group to join me at the podium, please. Is everybody gathered around?
We're coming.
You're fine. Occasionally, you just kind of stumble upon something, and I learned of this group actually on social media. And once I learned about what they did, I thought it was very important that we recognize their commitment and participation and generosity to our community. Behind me, you see the GLC 4x4 and Assistance Group. And whereas, GLC 4x4 and Assistance is a volunteer organization originally formed with the purpose of using their own 4x4 trucks and SUVs to help those who were stuck during the snowstorm this year, and whose purpose has grown beyond its original mission, and is looking to keep helping the community in a way within their means, and has assisted people who were truly in need, no matter what day or time, and consists of a group of people with many different skill sets that can help from automotive services, lawn and tree service, to residential repairs, and have come together and donated their own time and materials to help those in need, in the hope that others will follow their example and return to a time when neighbors helped neighbors. And the GLC 4x4 and Assistance has accomplished pulling out hundreds of cars and trucks that were stuck or slid off the roads during the last snowstorm, including law enforcement vehicles and a fire truck. They took people in the medical fields to and from work at the hospital and nursing homes. They carried food, kerosene, wood, and other heating supplies to those without transportation. They blocked roads to help first responders work accident scenes. They cleared driveways and secondary roads. They raised money and built outdoor steps and repaired a roof for a disabled veteran. And they cut and removed fallen trees. And the GLC 4x4 and Assistance is scheduled to help demolish a house in order for Habitat for Humanity to rebuild on the lot. Work with, they also work with area nursing homes and are looking for volunteer opportunities to help clean up areas of the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Todd Pierceall, Mayor Pro Tim of the City of Gastonia, and the Gastonia City Council, do hereby recognize the GLC 4x4 and Assistance for their outstanding volunteer contribution to others and service to the community. And I just think it's a really, really wonderful thing when people take it upon themselves just to help neighbors. They're a totally volunteer organization. They'll accept donations, but there's no payment accepted. So this is something that, that we can all learn from, just to help our neighbors out. I know in this political world, it's, it seems that everybody's at everybody's throat, and we have a group in, in Gastonia that just really, really stands out. So congratulations, and thank you very much.
Well, let me just start by saying thank you to the city for your recognition. It's much appreciated, but we never thought that it would go this far. Let me start by introducing some of our key people in this whole operation. Our president, Michael Thompson, and his fiancee, Mandy. And this is Sandy, our lead dispatcher. And this is David, my husband. Not the whole, the whole group is not here tonight, but we all started as strangers and got together by Facebook posts. Like-minded strangers that decided to help our community. And we want to take this to the next level, and we want to help more people in the community because we see so much need. So we have a Facebook page. You can find us on Facebook, and if you want to donate, volunteer, or even have a need that you yourself need help with, if we can help you with it, we'll be more than glad to. So thank you.
Thank you. If you want to rock by, you can say, "Thank you." Thank you so much. Congratulations. Now you didn't introduce yourself for the record. What's your name? Jessica Stokes. Okay. Hey, young lady, how are you? Hey, how are you? Thanks for what you do. Thanks for what you do. Want to congratulate all those receiving proclamations this evening. Do we have a motion to approve these four proclamations?
I'll make--
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Got Mr. Humphries on the motion, and Councilman Gallagher on the second. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you. That's unanimous. And--
Before the consent agenda--
Oh.
--the mayor? Mayor Dave Curlin, City Councilman Curlin?
Yeah. Do that right before consent.
Right now?
No. I'm still on presentations. For Item E, we have another presentation, which is our Arbor Day Poster Contest winner. We already had the proclamation for Arbor Day, and this is a big part of that event. And we have Ms. Carly Caldwell with Keep Gastonia Beautiful. She's the school specialist and recycling coordinator. She's going to lead us in showing us all this beautiful artwork that we can see from up here.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim Pierceall and City Council. Keep Gastonia Beautiful is excited to present to you the winners of our Arbor Day Poster Contest for 2016. We have 13 schools that participated and entering over 65 pieces of art. Some of the contest winners are here tonight. Winners, as I announce your name, please come forward to accept your certificate. For kindergarten through second grade, our first place winner is Karina Singh from Gaston Day. Our second place winner is Isabel Cordell from Piedmont Community Charter School.
Pat, if you could ask them to stand across the front so the audience can see their artwork?
Our third place winner is JV Lynn Davis from Robinson Elementary. And our honorable mentions are Madeline Wyatt from Piedmont Community Charter School, and Nathan Esquivel from Piedmont Community Charter School. For third grade through fifth grade, our first place winner is Ally Henrickson from Gaston Day. Our second place winner is Lucian Smith from Piedmont Community Charter School. Our third place winner is Abby Armstrong from Lowell Elementary. And our honorable mention is Julissa Hernandez Gardner Park Elementary. Ashton Kenna from Piedmont Community Charter School. And Meredith Wyatt from Piedmont Community Charter School. Our middle school winners, first place is Caitlin Conricode from Mount Holly Middle. Our second place is William DeMore from Gaston Day. Our third place is Samantha Warner from Bessemer City. And our honorable mention is Audrey Abernathy from Mount Holly. And Sally Help from Gaston Day. And another honorable mention for middle school is Molly Sly from Mount Island Charter School. I don't believe she's present tonight. For high school, our first place winner is Rachel McFarland from East Gaston. Second place is Caitlin Kendrick from Forestview. And our third place is Mercedes Romero from Piedmont Community Charter School. Our honorable mentions are Elizabeth Efford, Hannah Grimm, and Isaac Black. Isaac Black is from East Gaston, and Elizabeth and Hannah are both from Gaston Day. Students, if y'all could turn around-- Our second place is William Demore from Gaston Day. Our third place is Samantha Warner from Bessemer City. And our honorable mention is Audrey Abernathy from Mount Holly. And Sally Helt from Gaston Day. And another honorable mention for middle school is Molly Sly from Mount Island Charter School. I don't believe she's present tonight. For high school, our first place winner is Rachel McFarland from East Gaston. Second place is Caitlin Kendrick from Forest View. And our third place is Mercedes Romero from Piedmont Community Charter School. Our honorable mentions are Elizabeth Efford, Hannah Grimm, and Isaac Black. Isaac Black is from East Gaston, and Elizabeth and Hannah are both from Gaston Day. Students, if y'all could turn around so the council could see your artwork?
Oh, wow.
Very impressive.
Did all the parents get the pictures they wanted? Everybody good? There was a lot of them going, so.
Yes.
Turn around. If you need to come closer to get a picture.
Thank you all for participating, and thank you to your teachers who instructed and encouraged you to be creative. Parents, I know you're extremely proud.
Hopefully, everybody's smiling. Well, no, we certainly want to thank you. Congratulations to all of the winners. Really, really great work there. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, students. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Carly. Next item on the agenda is item F, which is public expression. And we do not have anybody signed up, so we will not have, excuse me, we will not have anybody speaking. Before we move to the consent agenda, as you noticed, I am not Mayor Bridgeman, and we are also missing Councilman Curlin. Neither one of them could be with us tonight. So do I hear a motion that we excuse both the mayor and Councilman Curlin?
So moved.
Second to that. Oh, second. We've got Councilman Kellogg gave the second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And we will excuse Mayor Bridgeman and Councilman Curlin. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion, a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, great. We'll move right into the regular agenda, which is item number five. And we've lost an entire side of the room. Look down for a second and look what you missed. Wow, okay. For our first item, it is item number five. It's the outage management system presentation, and that is going to be given by Mr. Glenn Freed, GIS technician, and Mr. Ray Kurtiak. Did I get that right? Okay, sorry about that. Application and GIS manager.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. I'm Glenn Freed with the Electric Department, and with me is Ray Kurtiak from Technology Services. Tonight, I would like to share information regarding our new outage management software by DataVoice. The rollout has been very successful, and the new technology readily accepted and embraced by staff. If you have any questions during the presentation, please feel free to ask them. What does DataVoice do? DataVoice provides IVR, interactive voice response, and OMS outage management systems for utilities. We're using the DataVoice IVR system in the city and have been for almost 10 years. This slide is a basic overview showing the OMS in the center of the screen. The new integrated OMS leverages the city's existing IVR, geographic, and customer information systems, bringing all the information together. It has many features to increase and improve both operational efficiency and customer service. The implementation team consists of key staff members from the Electric, Water Sewer, and Technology Services Departments, as well as DataVoice staff. The system has been in use since late November, with staff adding new features and training additional personnel as the new features came online. The OMS is currently operational in after-hours and weekends mode and is ready to be fully operational 24/7 starting tomorrow. Additional modules, one for key accounts and the other for SCADA integration, are planned for late spring, early summer 2016. And the system benefits the city by improving the electric and water sewer operations, allowing staff to quickly respond and manage outages, both small and large, using multiple notification methods. City personnel now have access to location-based service history, as well as accurate, real-time information, especially during major events, improving communications and operational awareness. The system also provides access to new quality assurance and quality control tools for GIS and CIS, greatly increasing data accuracy for the city. Here we see examples of a text and an email that personnel receive on their mobile devices. In addition to these two notifications, the system automatically places a call to the field supervisor to verbally inform them of the outage. The texts and emails give them further information about the outage. The system delivers real-time, location-based information regarding outages to the crews in the field via the Lyman app on mobile devices. Our Lyman use the Lyman app to confirm the outage. Once repairs are made, they use the same app to close the outage in the system. In large events, the same process occurs at multiple locations all across our entire service area. The predictive nature of the system, paired with the use of mobile devices, allow our Lyman to quickly respond, evaluate, update, and make the necessary repairs to restore service to our customers as quickly and safely as possible. The map is automatically updated in real-time again to show the locations involved in the outage. In this example, service in this area has been restored. Lastly, on the operational side, the system offers elected officials and managers real-time information via the Managers app on mobile devices. This screen shows some of the additional information available through the Managers app. The app keeps decision-makers informed without the need for individualized repetitive updates. The city benefits with improved communication and a greater and more accurate operational awareness. On the customer service side, all of the interfaces are designed to simplify the reporting of problems. The IVR recognizes the caller ID, and when appropriate, notifies them of existing outages in their area. If the customer number is not on file, they are prompted to enter their customer number. The IVR also gives the customer an option to use a streamlined menu system to report their outage and request an automated notification when their service has been restored. Here's a graphic of the website for electric service, showing the reporting of an outage. There are three customer websites, electric, water, and sewer. Here's an example of the water interface. These websites give the customer an option to use a compact interface to easily report their outage. The websites also allow the customer to request an automated notification when their power has been restored, to see other outages in the area, and the number of customers that are currently affected by any service interruptions. In addition to the websites, the DataVoice system provides a free, downloadable mobile app called PowerPal, where customers can report outages, view a map of system outages, and receive push notifications with restoration updates. The icon circled in red is our actual logo. On the left is the city's primary outage reporting webpage, where customers can report a specific service problem, and the mobile app can be downloaded. On the right is an example of a customer reporting their outage using the PowerPal app. The Electric Department and Two Rivers Utilities has shared the cost of the project, and Technology Services will provide support. The total cost of the system is $114,140 and includes software installation, data preparation, integration, and onsite training. The city will be responsible for annual maintenance costs totaling $19,030 after the first year. In summary, the system has been very well received by staff and is ready to be fully operational 24/7 tomorrow. The increased access to information and improved communications, both among staff and to our customers, results in more efficient operations and improved customer service. At this time, Ray has a few comments he would like to make. You are also invited to come by the Municipal Operations Center to see the system in use at any time. Mayor Pro Tem and council members, I thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Pierceall and council members. My name is Ray Kurtiak. I'm with the City's Technology Services Department. I've been the project manager for this outage management system project. I just wanted to take a couple minutes to make a few comments to expand on some of what Glenn presented with you guys, presented you with. As Glenn mentioned, the system's been very well received by the city staff. The DataVoice system does a really, really good job of taking information that resides in several different city information systems. As he mentioned, the geographic information system, customer information system, bringing that all together, analyzing it, and presenting the results to the users in a very intuitive way that makes things really easy for them to understand. However, one thing I wanted to make clear, that it's really the accuracy of the information that's in those other systems. It's really critical to making it work. So I want to take a mention, take a second to mention the staff has really done a great job of keeping that information in those various backend systems up to date and accurate. The bottom line to that is that the users now trust the information that the DataVoice system is rendering and showing them, and it's made a world of difference in their willingness to embrace it and adopt the system. So that's one thing I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of. The commitment by our staff as well to this whole project throughout the whole process has been exceptional. Everyone involved has really just kind of jumped in feet-first, asked, you know, did whatever they were asked to do. Very few complaints, problems. In particular, Glenn has been very, very instrumental in both that data cleanup process, keeping the information up to date, as well as in the configuration process. So I'd like to personally thank Glenn for all of his work in this whole process. Certainly made my job much, much easier. On the customer side of things, as he mentioned, we fully accept, expect things to be equally as well-accepted. Again, the system provides several different interfaces for the customer. They're all designed to be really easy to use, allows them to provide several different ways to get information back and forth with the city during an outage event. In particular, the IVR, the phone menu system, and the mobile application, after a little bit of initial setup, they're really, really minimal effort required to report an issue. Additionally, the mobile app itself provides automated notifications back to the customer with status updates on when your power's expected to be restored or when it finally is restored. So it's very useful to the customer. Again, we really want to encourage our utility system customers to visit the city's website to learn more about the system, to download the free mobile app, which is available in both the Google App Store, or Google Play Store, and the Apple iOS Store. There are links also on our website that they can directly download the app from, or they can simply search for their app stores for the COG True Utilities application and follow the instructions to install it. Thank you for your time this evening. We'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you very much, Councilman Gallagher.
My question is basically, how long has this been up and going? And two, how's it been received? Have you guys had any experience with any customers out there getting back to you, you know, outages or anything like that so far?
The system's been used in various stages since late November. I think the week before Thanksgiving is when we really introduced it. I think it's gone very, very well. Again, from the city staff side, it's been very well accepted. Customers, I think, enjoy the ability to have communications back and forth. The mobile app and the website apps and all that stuff we're just introducing now, but the menu system, the phone IVR system, has been in place since that point in time. I'm not aware of any complaints from customers.
Not a one.
So it seems to be very well-accepted by our utility customers.
I look forward to downloading the app.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierceall.
Ray, can you tell us again what we search for on the iOS Store or on Google Play to, what search terms should we put in?
You should be able to search by Gastonia Utilities, Gastonia Electric, COG, C-O-G-T-R-U is the actual name of the application. As you can all imagine with these small devices, it's kind of hard to put a big, long name on there, so we had to come up with an abbreviation for it to make the icon fit. So any of those terms, in addition to DataVoice, the vendor, you can search by those terms and be able to find it in either store.
Councilman Kellogg?
Thank you. You may have already addressed this, and if you have, please bear with me, and I apologize. I'm just wondering if there is a PR campaign or something that will be going out to try to promote this to our residents?
We have done some things. We've put a bill print message, so every utility bill that went out had a little message on it that this system was coming. We've also done some things at the kiosks in the form of displays at the top of the kiosk. What else have we done? The website, it's got information on there about the system is coming. One of the things that you need to do in your initial setup is register your phone number or your utility account with the system. So that was advertised as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would just say, we got the email. Was that from you, Michael? Oh, it was from me.
Yes, you all should have gotten an email with access to that. That part is called the Managers app. That's really intended for decision-makers and council people, public officials, to keep you guys in the loop. The beauty of that thing is, instead of you having to call during an event and get updates, or someone having to call each of you individually and update you, the system, you can access this system, and it eliminates the need for those repetitive, individualized kind of updates.
Yeah, it was really neat. I downloaded all three, the electric, water, and sewer. Really, really neat stuff.
Yeah, I did too. It's easy to navigate.
Yeah.
It's really user-friendly.
I hate to say this, but I was wanting somebody to call me and tell me there was an outage. I know, I see it on my app. We certainly don't want anybody to have an outage at any time, but it is really neat, so I'm looking forward to seeing the consumer-facing side of that now. Because it's really, really neat thing.
Yes. And again, just like we said, we'd encourage everybody, utility customers, and you guys would like to go to the website, check out those things. There's different maps, different graphs, all kinds of information available during an event. Unfortunately, when there is no event, it's not all that dynamic, so. But otherwise, yeah, it really just opens up a whole new avenue for us to communicate with our utility customers in a positive way.
When there's no event, though, you can see where the trucks are, though.
Yeah.
Find that interesting.
Some of it, yes, on the electric side.
Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. And certainly those with active social media accounts certainly put the word out there to the public. Something that I think they will certainly enjoy, especially if it's something with your power and your computers down and everything else, just reach for your smartphone, like to do with everything else.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Very good presentation. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item number six, which is the Recreation Advisory Committee Report.
Mr. Pierceall, are you going to do 5A first?
I'm sorry, I did, thank you, thank you. We are chucks, all right? I didn't mean to make you jump up there, but yes, I apologize. We did add this when we approved the agenda, and I skipped right over it. It is item 5A, which is the James H. Lynn and Science Theater Project. And we do have some members from the SHIELD. We have Dr. Ann Tippett. Another exciting thing going on in Gastonia.
Another exciting thing. Mayor Pro Tem and council, it's a delight to be with you this evening and to share a really exciting project. In 1960, the SHIELD Museum opened to the public. 1966, a planetarium was added. And in 1967, they hired a science teacher from the school next door, James H. Lynn, to be the first director. That was a 75-seat facility, and many exciting things happened in there. The projection system could project stars on the ceilings. And many of the devices at that time, if you needed a special effect for lightning or some other kind of thing, they had to be homemade. They had to be crafted for that. That served the museum well, and in 1989, there was a major addition to the building, and the planetarium was moved into a larger facility, the one that we've been in since 1990. It seats 152 people. Well, in 1989, 90, the computers that sat on some of our desks were much larger. Well, today, all of that walks around, and just what you were talking about, walks around with us. And just as the digital technology in our world has really moved forward, the same thing happened with planetarium systems. And that opened up a whole new world, other than just projecting the stars and being able to overlay that with outlines of constellation, you know, patterns. The world really began to change. The price was really substantial for many, many years. And we began to dream of a new system some time ago, but it was really out of reach. We kept doing the amateurizing with the numbers, and the business plan just wouldn't work. And an interesting thing happened, though, in the last few years. The quality of the digital projection system has actually gone up, and the price came down. And this seemed like the correct time in terms of the business approach to really look at this system. We also were getting the early inklings that the system that we had, the old A512, was really about to give up the ghost. And so in terms of planning, we began planning this project maybe a year and a half, two years ago. And we are here tonight to share with you that we have installed a new system, and it's with the same Spitz Corporation. They made the original instrument in 1966 that we had. And we have retired the old A512. The step forward that this brings to us is really a whole new world. The 512 was a fixed entity that came rose up out of the floor, and it was very dramatic, and you turned the lights down and the stars came out. With this new system, it's digital, it's computer-based, so if someone can dream it, if a student can see it or create it on the computer with original design, with video... original design, with video or whatever, it can be projected now 360 degrees all the way around the inside of the dome. And that opens up doors that were unimaginable a few years ago. So now with this system in place, we will be able to teach more than astronomy, planetary science, the history of space exploration. It opens doors to many, many other parts of the curriculum for our students. We will be able to teach geology. There's an incredible active program called Layered Earth. We have some physics programs. There's even an anatomy program if you want to fly through the human body. So the number of topics are literally as boundless as our imagination. And I've said this several times lately, I really think that we know what this system can do, but until we really start growing with it in the next few months, there's, there are a lot of things that we don't know that we can do with this system. In the opening of this, we selected a show and the show that we selected to open with is called Super Volcanoes. And this is a high-energy show and we will be opening this to the public on March the 19th. We are really looking forward to a real active day on that day, but over the next few months, we will be able to change that program schedule. So that one of the goals of the project, of course, was to buy the equipment and to change out the equipment. But we also were able to do, as part of the, the fundraising and part of the project, we've been able to upgrade that part of the facility, which has needed it for, well, more than, it's served us for more than 20 years. So we've been able to paint, replace carpet. We reupostered some of the parts of the seats and then bought other new, we've replaced lighting, upgraded lighting. We have new cove lighting and new step lighting for safety. We have done a number of sort of facelift enhancements so that when you, when you come across the lobby now, you will see that we've also really given a facelift to the whole approach to that area. There's also a new sound system. Now, I'm not the audiophile and I'm not the expert, but even I was impressed when I walked in there and heard the, the vibrancy and the liveliness of the sound. And certainly that sound is an important part of the whole projection system. So we will be opening to the public on March the 19th. This is going to be an exciting day and for people that would like to come out and join us that day, probably the best way to get information is to go to www.shieldmuseum.org and have a look at the schedule. We're anticipating a, a good crowd that day and we are pre-selling so you can do advanced purchase on your tickets, which is a new function of our renovated website. That renovated website's been serving us very well. We're also sticking our toe in the water of doing other kinds of sales and things online. Membership, we've been selling summer camp and we've been selling tickets to other events. So that's what's in the offing. I'm very excited to invite all of you. If you can't come in the next few days to see it, if you will, please let me know. We're very proud of it. We're very excited about it. We would love to have the opportunity to show you the system. I don't know that people, the people that installed the carpet, we were so excited about it. The staff was going in and out of there and going, oh, look at that, oh, look at that. I think these people thought that maybe we were all not where we should be to be so excited, but it was, it was so wonderful after 23, 24 years to have this kind of a physical upgrade in the place that, yes, we all kept an eye on it. And I'm sure they went home, but the time, folks, they were from, out of town, but the time they left, they, we gave them some complimentary passes and they're going to come back and bring their families. This will do much for us in terms of our students and what we can offer to them and to our families, but it also is a real step forward for us in being able to have an increased attraction level because part of our goal is to bring people from outside Gaston County into Gaston County. Pull off the interstate, stop and spend some time with us. It's a great place to live and our intent with this is to take a lot of our promotion outside Gaston County to see if we can't drive some traffic here. And I think we've got a product to do that.
Any questions for Dr. Tippett?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Gallagher?
Dr. Tippett, I know it's Saturday the 19th is when it kicks off, right?
Yes.
What is the time? Is it 10 o'clock or the first showing?
We will open at nine.
At nine? So the first showing for a planetarium is nine, 9:30?
Probably 10.
10, okay. Excellent. Look forward to it.
Good.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Other questions? Great, I know I'm excited. And you've been working on it a while. I remember sitting in some of the meetings.
Yes, yes.
Lot of funding. Where, where did the funding come from?
The funding was raised by the SHIELD Museum Board of Trustees. So in partnership with, with the city, we've been able to, to pull this off in, in really an amazing short period of time. We had a really good response from, from our, from our citizens.
So people should sign up, join the SHIELD, become a member and experience the new theater.
Exactly. And they can do that online now.
Do it all online. Next, we need an app.
There we go. There we go.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to move on to item number six and that presentation will be done by Mr. Chuck Dellinger of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and members of council. Dr. Curly asked me to present this report since he was not going to be here tonight. This report is from our February meeting. We discussed several items and one was a project update and I'll, I'll touch on those very briefly. Be happy to know that the walkway construction on the tennis courts has begun and hopefully that's going to be completed in the next few weeks. We are continuing with meetings to discuss the downtown ballpark as far as the feasibility. We've got a, I think we sent out an RFP in the last couple of weeks, so that, that project is, is moving forward in that regard. The Lamburger Park Greenway parking area, they're, the construction company is staging down there and are set to begin paving. Looks like they're going to try to get that paving started this week. Everything dries out the way they should. I know they have most of that equipment down there ready to go, which would put that project somewhere in the neighborhood of April to early May finish. The Maples on Main project is about 90% complete. The kiosks were put up last week. We have, part of the bench is up, so we're waiting on a, a number of them to come in and put those in. And like Ms. Johnson said earlier, I think we have, I think we have a meeting actually tomorrow to discuss the Maples on Main Arbor Day combination, grand opening celebration, some sort of, something that will be with the city, with KGB and also with the downtown merchants. The project on Second Avenue and Marietta Street, the concrete Public Works has worked the last week and a half, bless you, last week and a half pouring concrete and they're, they're probably about half, halfway done with all the concrete work that they're going to do, but that project is, is moving forward. There was no action to be taken on those. Any questions on the projects?
Chuck, the park that's going in at Second Avenue and Marietta, the concrete that was poured, is that stained concrete or is it the, is the color mixed in before? I've been by there several times.
That color goes all the way through. Now they've got, they've got a, a really good mixture that you can, it's an additive to the concrete, so it is a colored concrete. It's not just stained on top.
Neat. It's really attractive.
It's a really a nice color. That's, that's what we did over at the York Street Highland Project. It was a colored concrete and it really, I mean, it really looks good. It looks good.
Any, Councilman Gallagher?
Chuck, just one question. The question I have is the maples that we have on Main Street, I know that we had some white birch over by the Transit Center and they cut them all down and took them all down. Can we put, if we have some extra ones over by the Transit Center? I mean, it's pretty blank and barren now without, without those trees there. So just wanted to find out if they can look into that.
We are, we are set to plant, to have some more plantings in that area over at the, over at the Transit. I'm, I'm going to be honest, our, our project list is, is actually getting, getting broader with what our scope is. We do have some trees that were left over and I'm pretty sure they were designated for there. I'll check to make sure it, that they were. But I know that's on the list to put trees in, whether it's some left over from, from the Maples on Main Project or, or some of the others that we're, I know we have some slated for that area.
Okay.
I think a whole planting project is, is scheduled for that, but it may wind up being another one of those smaller projects to do the whole thing at one time. But I'll, I'll check and definitely get you that information.
The other item I just want to mention is can the recreation, can you get the Recreation Committee Commission to, to look at the fields at Martha Rivers regarding soccer and teams playing there? I'm getting folks calling me regarding wet fields and having, you know, not being able to play on them and that type of thing. And I just wanted to know if the Recreation Commission can look into something like that.
Absolutely. And Councilman Gallagher, I am a trickle-down effect from your phone calls. They normally, they normally come to me as well. Sometimes they come up the ladder and sometimes they come down, but we try to handle them to, handle them the best we can as we go. I will tell you that when dealing with the fields of Martha Rivers Park, I'd like, if I may, if I may, Mayor Protem, since we're into this, is to kind of give just a, kind of a brief history of how, of how the layout of Martha Rivers Park is and how the priority uses were when we even dreamed of having Martha Rivers Park. It was, it was built primarily for the youth of Gastonia, the city of Gastonia that participated in our programs to, to play on, to have a, a fine quality facility to play on. The second use that goes along with our school use agreement was that any schools that would like to use them would have a second priority. The third use would be for economic impact, for weekend tournaments, for groups that would bring in hotel nights to be the third use. And the, the fourth use would be for any other organizations that would like to use it to rent them. So that's, that's how that is, is laid out. What we try to do is balance all of those things together to keep the fields in good shape so they can be utilized by tournament teams and also by, that they're nice quality fields for our own citizens to play in. So we're, we're in a balancing act, be glad to meet, be glad for the Recreation Advisory Commission to, to take this up. This was the first year that we've allowed one of those organizations to, to actually play before March. Had a schedule of January, February. Well, I'm, I'm going to say I didn't know that was actually happened until after the fact that the schedules were out. We have not normally done that. January and February, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a one in 10 chance that you're going to get to play anyway. So I think that's where part of these phone calls came from. But to educate the, the parents and some of those from there in, educate all of our staff to make sure that when it is playable, that the games are played. But when it is not playable, whether it's safety or whether it's a detriment to the fields, that we all know what that balance is and make sure that pendulum swings to where it is. But we'll be glad to, glad to take it up. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to preach, but I'm sorry, Mayor Protem.
No, that was a good explanation, Chuck. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I appreciate it too. I received two of those phone calls about games at Martha Rivers, so thank you.
Well, anytime you receive one, I'll be glad, I'll be glad to take, take that call, be glad to make that commitment. But I, I really think that a meeting with our Recreation Advisory Commission and some of these groups to, to kind of validate sort of what I just said, but also help with education process as well.
Sure. I, I think Mr. Munn had a question.
With regard to planting more trees, we have a program. Each year we fund out of the electric department because the electric department, one of the things we do with electric departments, we cut trees down because trees grow and have conflicts. And so what, one of the aspects of being an electric city is you cut trees down all throughout the city. So a number of years ago, we set up a, a fund where also electric pays to KGB into a fund to be able to have funds for additional tree planting. And so those additional tree plantings often move into recreation and other places in our public and throughout the, our publicly-owned properties throughout the city to rebuild the tree canopy. So we will, we have funding for trees and we'll be able to replace those and take a look at, around the Transit Center.
Okay, Chuck.
All right, our second item was the, we discussed the county township grants with that, with our Recreation Advisory Commission. I will tell you that I, I think the, the contracts have come in from the county and they're being reviewed and moving forward with that. We have received proposals on the two playgrounds at IC Falls and Smyre from playground companies that can fit the timeframe that we need and with the funding that we have. So those are, those are definitely on go. We're working with, with our engineering and other departments on the spray ground and hopefully we're going to be organized and ready to go to have that, well, not hopefully, but we are going to be organized and ready to go to have that one so we can get it open next year as well. It's about a, that could be about a six to nine-month project once we get started. That was what we discussed there on the, on those township grants. Be glad to answer any questions on those.
Any questions for Chuck on the item number two? No questions?
Our, our third item was a department organization and restructure. We spent about a year doing an in-house assessment, considered several factors, succession planning, organizational continuity and accountability, expected levels of service, addition of areas of responsibility and associated job duties with some, our customer service, community partnerships. We, we, we assessed everything that we, we actually do and came up with a plan which was more of an organizational restructure that Mr. Munn and other, other city staff looked at. And it divides our, the Recreation Department into three, into three segments. One is parks and facilities. And parks and facilities is all of our maintenance, it's all of our construction projects, it's anything, anything that has to do with building, construction and, and maintenance, beautification. We have an assistant director who is in charge of, in charge of that segment of our operation. We have another segment, which is our athletics and community centers, anything that involves programming. We have a, an assistant director of recreation. Anything from our partnerships, it really does, it really does separate and it makes us work regardless of who's in my, my position or any of the others. It gives us that structure that we need and also gives us steps for succession planning when those of us move on that have a lot of years here. The other is we wanted our customer service and what we do with our administrative staff is another area. And Rankin Lake falls into that, our Skeet and Trap Range falls into that, where we're dealing with marketing, customer service and the public. So we feel like with those three areas, we are definitely on our way as far as structure goes to be and to being a, a better organization at serving the public the way we want to serve the public. Be glad to answer anything.
Any questions?
No question, just a, a brief comment. You all have a lot on your plate and I just want to thank you for doing such a great job and, and it's just a good job to you all.
Thank you, thank you. We have, we have a, a tremendous group of hard-working folks. I can't say enough about our, our maintenance staff, can't say enough about our program staff and our administrative staff. We, they're all, this time of year, we're pedaling hard. When, when, when it's 80 degrees early in March, I mean, our phone, the phone doesn't ring. Most of the time it's good things, but every now and then we get those complaints, Dave. But thank you, thank you for that comment. Also in that, speaking of succession planning, Pat Corinth, our assistant director, she's been with the city more than 35 years. January 16th, 1981 is retiring. April the 1st, March 24th, next Friday is her last day. She didn't want to go out with any fanfare or anything. We do have the, the key to the city, we do have a, a plaque and we're going to do some things, but she just wanted to be on her, at her desk, in her job, her last, her last day. So we're going to honor those. We're not going to have a lot of fanfare, but all of our staff, they're going to come by and wish her well on her last day. And feel free to come by Memorial Hall on that day and she, she can kick me later on, but I'm going to have some punch and cookies and peanuts and, you know, a few things around there for that. But if you do have time or if you see her out, she's been a, a very dedicated, very hard-working person. A lot of times behind the scenes, just, just like she doesn't want to have fanfare going out, she really didn't pursue that type of fanfare as, as an employee and does, just has done, just in a amazing job. I will say that we have interviews for that position coming up this Friday. We have a panel interview that's set up for that. We have had over 240 candidates for that position, and we're interviewing five this Friday. So we look forward to that process and making a recommendation from that panel, not from me. I really don't want to be the one making that decision for this hire for obvious reasons. I think that this position will grow, and hopefully in the next year or so, they're going to become familiar, or it could be an in-house candidate, it could be someone from outside that gets the job. But when I retire, hopefully, this will be the stepping stone, and someone can move in this position. It's rare that you have two that are retiring and could retire at the same time, and that's why the need for that reorganization, restructure, to have more in the way of succession planning.
She'll certainly be missed, I know that. Any other questions for Chuck on those items? No? All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
On, while we're on the parks and recreation, we had one resignation from that committee. Mr. Mike Tate resigned his at-large seat. We have a gentleman that would like to take that seat, Mr. Russell Adams. Some of you guys may know him, he's the pickleball expert. So, but he would like to go on, and he has reached out to Councilman McHateer, certainly I know him, we've discussed it with Chuck. So if there's no objections, I would like to make the motion to put Mr. Adams on the Recreation Advisory Commission to fulfill the at-large seat vacated by Mr. Mike Tate. Have a second? In discussion? No? Anyone opposed? No? We're unanimous on that.
No.
And Mr. McHateer, did you, we had, oh, you were just going to leave Ward 5 as it was, right? We didn't need to do anything with that.
Okay. Great. Well, that looks good, then.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, I think I had a conversation with Dr. Carlin, that he was talking about making a recommendation also for that. I just...
He wanted to nominate Mr. Attaway, who's in Ward 5 for the at-large position. Mr. Attaway is very active with the Advisory Commission, and we didn't want to lose him. But Mr. McHateer has said that he would like to have Mr. Attaway remain as his Ward 5 appointment, and so it would not be necessary to move him to the at-large.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you.
That's what I was just asking Councilman McHateer about. So we're good there. Having concluded item number six, we'll move right into reports. Our city attorney report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I just wanted to briefly let the council know that last week, I met with Mr. Ace Beam and Mr. John McElmell, who is heading up some fundraising efforts on behalf of Mr. Beam. A contract signed by a licensed general contractor was tendered to the city. I did check the license number with the state online, it is valid. I did call the gentleman, his name is Richard Russell, and speak with him. He did indicate that he's been hired by Mr. Beam and is going to make the repairs. A new building permit does need to be pulled with the new subs, you know, electrical, plumbing and mechanical. Dumpster has been delivered to the property. I stressed to Mr. McElmell and Mr. Beam that the city needs to see continuous progress each month. The construction contract says it will be done October 30, but I stressed we must see progress every month. You know, I hesitate to set a precedent here, where after code enforcement has already, and city council has already taken an action to, you know, set up a process where time can be extended. But I think the extenuating circumstances here were Mr. Beam's age and his status as a veteran, and so, you know, my story, and I'm sticking to it, is that he's an exception to the rule. But again, we're going to have to see progress being made at that location for those neighbors, you know, in order to be fair to them. So the status of the demolition ordinance that you passed is it is still in effect, it is still valid, but the city manager holds the invoice to hire a contractor on his desk while we monitor what's going on.
You'll just keep an eye on that, and I guess code enforcement will go by and check on the...
Building inspections and code, too.
Councilman Gallagher?
I heard that some church is looking into helping him. I think they're looking at the cost assessment, from what I understand. They're saying that in order to redo this building the way it is right now, it would cost $50,000. But the church is thinking that maybe they are going to have to have it demolished and build a new building for like $30,000.
Mr. Beam was clear, he is repairing his home, it's his family home, he's been in the family for a long time. And the contract was for $29,000. And I spoke with Mr. Russell, and Mr. Russell said they are going to repair the home. So that is the information that I received. I just wanted to be clear. I have had some communications with some churches, but no 100% commitment to raising all the money. I think there is some fundraising going on, and that's all the information I have.
Okay. Was there not insurance on the home? Is that how we got into this situation?
That's part of the problem. I think that's part of the problem. Or either I fight with his insurance, you know, we're not...
But insurance is not paying?
We're not really privy to what...
Right.
So a lot of times with ours, not with ours, with fire claims, you know, you have a protracted issue with your homeowner's insurance, and we are just not privy to that information. I don't know what happened.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you for that. Anything else on your report?
That'll be it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll go to Mr. Ed Munn for the city manager's report.
Mayor Protem, members of city council, this past week, we had a funeral for Whitty Barnhill, and she was the executive secretary to the city manager at the time, and deputy city clerk. And she's a lifelong resident of Gastonia, married to her husband, Bob, for 65 years. Her older brother was, or is, Representative Doug Dixon. And she served the city very faithfully and very well, a number of city councils and mayors and all of us at city halls. She will be very, we will miss her greatly, and she just was a breath of fresh air, a very hard-working, dedicated city employee, and a passionate resident of the city of Gastonia. And the other thing I want to comment on is tonight, it's interesting, we're looking at some of the different departments and some of the work that they do, and they're really, you run everything from the KGB program that's working with all the students to the Shille Museum, and what they're doing to bring people to our community and the passion that they have. And then a collaboration with our IT department and Public Works and Electric working on the outage management system. And then, again, the passion from Recreation with all the programs that they're doing. And it's really, I'm very proud to be the city manager of all the employees that are presenting tonight and present other times. So it's just a good group, working hard. We never have enough money, and we, there's always seem to be, soon as we fix a problem, another one pops up. But I think tonight's a good example of some of the good quality work that's being done with the city, and I'm very, very proud of them. And that's my report.
Thank you. We'll start in here. Councilman Kellow?
Thank you very much. I had the pleasure of attending the UNC School of Government Training, wonderful training. I know that Dave attended that as well. I'm surprised how much they could pack into in two days, but it's just great training, and I'm really thankful for that opportunity. I'm also just really, really thankful for our residents and our citizens who continue to come to me with various issues or concerns or even ideas for the city. You know, I really take that part of my role seriously, and I thank each and every one of them who continue to either call me or give me an email or send me an email. I enjoy meeting with them, and I'm just glad that we have such a responsive city manager and staff that are able to field those questions and get them out to the right people so that we can address those issues. So I'm very, very thankful for that. And I had the honor of attending a Gaskin JC's meeting this past week, and I actually kind of crashed their meeting. They didn't really know I was coming until about an hour, an hour ahead of time. But they are a great group of excited, young individuals who are really on fire with ideas and passion for the city and the county. And it was a real exercise for me to just listen, sit back and listen. I didn't participate, I just wanted to go there and say hello to these folks. And we have some really excited, young people at work in our area, so that was really refreshing. And one final comment, I was in Charlotte last night at an event, and I had some people who were talking with me, and I mentioned that I was on the city council. Usually, we hear about the good things that are happening in Charlotte, but these folks mentioned to me of the good things they're hearing about in Charlotte that are happening here in Gastonia. So I just wanted to pass that along. So many times, we, it's kind of the opposite, we're talking about Charlotte and some of the things that are happening there. But they just wanted to go out of their way to mention to me how they're hearing about things happening in our downtown, people moving here, and some good things that are happening in our city. So I wanted to share that with all of you, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Certainly, we like to hear people saying good things about us. It's always great. Councilman Gallagher?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Pierce Hall? First off, I don't know if you all got these letters from Piedmont Community Charter School to come and do a tour. It was nice, it was on the Lightning, it was off of, it's the old Wynn Dixie Building off of New Hope South down there. It was excellent. Jennifer Purdy took me around to all the different classrooms and stuff, and it was just really, really nice. It's not very long or arduous, you know, you probably enjoy yourselves when you get a chance to get there. The other thing, I was at Tabernacle Baptist Church for Reverend Hinton for his 25th anniversary this past Sunday. Great time, great, excellent time, great service. It was really enjoyable. Also went to the Crisis Pregnancy Center's banquet, they raised $150,000 in one evening, which was excellent. And also, tomorrow night, I'm speaking with the gentleman who did the Gaston Hospital of Highland, and also did the Armstrong Apartments down here by Central School, Dewey Anderson. And he is going to, he and I went on a tour of the nurses dorm, the old orthopedic hospital, and he's going to give a rendering of what he's going to turn that into. So I just want to open up the invite to you all. You know, you're more than welcome to come. I invited some of the county leaders as well. And it's tomorrow at 5:30, second floor of city council, city hall. So if you have a chance, come on by, meet Dewey Anderson, and find out what, you know, he can do to this building. Instead of making it into apartments, he says it's too small, they could save it by making it into an office space. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir. And...
No report.
Mr. McHateer, no report. Mr. Humphrey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. This past Saturday, I spent better part of the morning riding around on our city buses. I advise everybody, if you get a chance, do it. I really enjoyed it. It was a great learning experience. The buses were clean, the drivers were beyond courteous. None of them knew, you know, who I was or anything until after I got off. I gave them one of my cards and asked them, you know, if they ever needed anything or helped something to call, but they were astonished that I took the time to do it. And I said, well, you know, I'm only Transportation Committee, I figured I should transport myself a little bit. But they were fantastic, very knowledgeable, very professional, and let me tell you, they know their clientele. They know their customers, most of them by first name, they know their schedule, their habits, they know, a lot of times, what they did the previous week. It's, with each stop, it's like there was a different family environment going on. And I was just sitting back watching, I was really impressed. There were a couple of minor observations I made, I'll pass those on to the city manager, he can dispense with them, nothing major. But it was a great experience. I'd like to thank the drivers that I spent time with this time, talking with me, answering my questions. It was John from Bus 1, Charlene on Bus 4, Phyllis on Bus 7, and the young lady in the control center, or the bus station, was Mariah. The nicest people you'll ever meet. It was, I don't know, it was, I can honestly say it's not what I was expecting. I was pleasantly surprised. And Michael, thank you for helping get that set up for me. I ran about half the route on Saturday. Next time, I'm going to do the other half here in the next month or two. I mean, I know we've got the firm that we hired to do the study, but sometimes, you just got to get out and see things for yourself. And let me tell you, a bus ride around town, I've seen places in Gastonia that I haven't seen in 40 years. And it was refreshing to see a lot of changes that I just never knew happened, but I really enjoyed it. Next thing is, and this may just be something to throw out for people to think about, Chief Help, you may even be able to comment, I don't know, I'm not expecting you to. There's been a lot on social media, and not so much the news outlets, about the terrorism, the ISIS, planning to go after hotels, motels, convention centers, wherever people gather. We all know there's some of those members in the US. A lot of them, I hope the authorities know where they are. Some of them, they probably don't. There may be some in North Carolina, we don't know. But for our sake, for the city, the citizens and the safety, with our convention center, I assume there is security set up whenever there are events. I don't know that for a fact, I'm just throwing it out there to maybe start a conversation about it. I think it's going to get more prevalent before it fades away, but it's something we definitely need to think about is the security in our facilities, especially where you have groups of outside people gathering for special events. And finally, everybody remember to keep our military personnel and first responders in your prayers and their families. And I hope everybody had a chance to vote today. Very, very, very special day.
Election Day.
Thank you.
The guest results will be coming in here soon, so that'll be interesting to watch. Just a couple of quick announcements on the mayor's announcement sheet. Don't forget, on March 22, the Facilities and Management Committee meeting. March 25 is Good Friday, city offices are closed. And then for all of us, on March 29, we have a council work session, the budget outlook, so make sure those are on your calendar. If there's nothing else, this meeting is officially adjourned.